The only thing I don't want to miss is next Tuesday, Thursday, right Kurt? I said the only thing I don't want to miss is next Thursday evening. Yeah, you have to change that. Well, I think Detroit, he's got a loan, he needs to get a tracker.
Is that average time?
I call a meeting to order on the April 9th of the city of Cedar Springs when everyone rise and sign the class with me at this time. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mrs. Nixon.
Here.
Mrs. Powell.
Here.
Mr. Truesdale.
Here.
Mrs. Conley.
Yes, here.
Mr. Hall is here, all present and accounted for. Public forum. The council welcomes, encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portion of this agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at that time. Concerns brought before the city council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communication with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then elevated to the council for action. This, those citizens wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record. I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak at this time.
Sean Kipart, 1575 21 Mile, Cedar. Just a, a quick scanner update, I'm only giving it because we had a, what we thought was a break-in a few days ago at the locker room. Police department had called our maintenance supervisor. And the doors were open and the lights were on in the locker room. We got there and found out there was no forced entry, somebody had a key, or picked it really well, it's a dead mold. Nothing was stolen, nothing was damaged, but what we would like to do now, we had planned on doing it this year anyway, but it's now moved up priority number one. The locks haven't been changed for, best we can get from the school is 20 to 25 years. So there are, who knows how many keys out there between Rocket and middle school and just, there, there could be hundreds. So we are going to change those locks and provide a master set to DPW and the city manager, whoever within the city obviously needs them. I would assume that would be DPW, so. That'll be done in the next week or two and we'll drop them off with Tom. But again, there was no damage to the building, the only thing that seems to be missing is a jacket, which was in Boston found anyway, so. Other than that, the first event that we have scheduled there is CTA, I did get with him, he started. On May 8th, everything else seems to be going fine. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? Mr. Navy, you are on.
Good evening.
On the agenda for the North Trail, so.
Yeah, I'm not doing that. Hi, Kurt Navy, Community Building Development Team. To me, we're a little bit slow right now, but that's just my side of the picture. Site plan has been coming back, a few little more tweaks to do for it, but with the amphitheater and the rain garden and the boardwalk are part of that plan. We've conjunction, done that conjunction with the library board also. So once that comes out and it's all finalized, we'll be able to share that. Hopefully next month, we'll have more meat and potatoes for you guys as far as the amphitheater. The sites at that is given to Tom Holloway, proving very helpful to us and some really nice designs on that, so. We're working on that side of it and I know that Perry's working on boardwalk through the DDA. And we've got our design, we're going to be working on Tuesday morning with Chouts Unlimited and Josh Zeiterven. On the designs on that side of the rain garden, what does that look like? And then we also looking at some sculptures down there, stainless steel, dragonflies. So anyways, next month, I'm hoping that we'll have two or three groups coming into you guys and keep you guys busy for a night, so.
Great.
Any questions?
Um, this is for the manager question. So the site plan approval for the amphitheater, that goes for the planning commission, correct?
Any of the construction for the amphitheater.
Does that, might understand that on the overall comes to you guys first and then any construction and that kind of stuff goes to the planning commission for a second?
Obviously get approval from the council to even.
Use.
The use of that property for that. And then, you know, that will come to council and then obviously the appropriate action would be if council is, does want.
Yep.
Done there, then it will be approved contingent on.
Approved by the planning commission, yeah.
Okay.
And we'll do that, I'm guessing in conjunction with the library when they present site plan. I think it's the appropriate thing to do, which seems how we're working together. Although that's, I think, as we formed a finance, capital gains kind of capital committee, working in conjunction with the library board on looking at grants and other sources for funding. Right now, we're focusing mainly on the library side of it, because like everybody else, we'd like to see that baby up and going, so. But we're working on it and we will continue to work in conjunction and it's really nice, the relationship we've got going with the library board. It's very congenial back and forth and focus on one area and that's, that's nice to do, so. Any other questions?
Um, I have this one, I know we have talked and I need direction from, that's clerk and the manager. We have talked about having the city council have a meeting with the Community Building Development Team, I believe the 21st of April at Hilltop.
Yes.
As a general meet and greet workshop strategy or, or. If, if, if the whole council wants to be there, we have to put in a.
We have to, we have to.
Do an agenda.
All as a special meeting, it's got to be noticed.
Yes, and that's where I'm getting at, so.
Is that to sign the MOU?
We don't know about that yet.
Well, we have to, we have to develop an agenda.
Yeah, we have to develop an agenda for us to be on there, for the MOU to be signed there, where we can sign it most anywhere, once it's passed.
Right.
And then if there's just a meet and greet there for your folks, but we all can't be there at the same time unless we put an agenda together.
Kelly, can you give me a hand on that one?
I will.
Okay.
Wait now.
Now, better use your four minutes.
I made sure that they knew I had a time and I will.
Okay, well she'll answer that question in just a minute, how's that? The other, the other aspect I would like to, to continue to encourage the city council is a meeting of citizens of Cedar Springs, not any specific group, but on that master plan. That master plan, the more I dig down through it, is good stuff, you know what I mean? And to get some things out there and plant seeds out there, so if there's something I don't like and I'm upset.
My four minutes are, sorry there.
We're sold.
Thank you. Okay, well, we have a lot of exciting things going on and we just, the short timing sometime, we want to make sure everything's above board and right. Especially for us to meet there, there's a lot of things that need to happen at city hall for us to be there, so I just want to put that out, in case. Okay, moving on. Mr. Kipart, you wanted to.
May I re-approach you?
Sure.
I missed something on my notes here, not related to scanner. Received two calls today from the chamber about the Earth Day cleanup. And I was a little lost because I believe it was Rich, from the city who handled that, is that correct? He always coordinated that in the past and he's retired now, so I didn't know exactly where to direct the two young ladies to call. Or if anyone's picking that up, Cedar Creek cleanup?
Yeah, real quickly, being called, City vulnerable one, we don't have a lot to tell them, we won't have any really to tell them until Monday, but. Kelly had already reached out and said that there's a group might be interested in being involved. Before that, the independent bank, Julie Wheeler, reached out, so the three of us are going to be Monday morning to talk about what we can do.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody was on the same page, because the last young lady that called me said city hall gave her my number. Which we were involved, we, we, we were involved, but we didn't coordinate it. So I'd be happy to help, but we don't know what we're doing yet, so.
Well, as soon as we know, I'm sure there'll be, but thank you, thanks for the comment. Anyone else wishing to address? Okay.
Mark Laws, 4th South First. I want to publicly thank Kurt for spearheading the community development thing. And, and the library people too, because it's, it's neat, it's a lot of excitement and a lot of people that I run into are excited about what's, what's going on, so, anyway. The other thing, I'm looking at the agenda and I see a lot of really important things or valuable things or things that are important to me in that unfinished business section, so thank you for getting to those, I appreciate it.
Thank you for telling us. Mr. Ringler.
David Rango, 95 North Main, if all goes well, our meeting tomorrow, we're moving dirt next week.
Anyone else listening?
Mr. E.
Yeah.
Gary Nead of 138 South Fifth. I just wanted to thank the police department for patrolling our street down there. They have a lot of speeders and they have been out there more than I can, I've been around here for around 10 years and I think we've seen them more in, in this few weeks than I did in 10 years. So I just wanted to thank them. Luckily, we could use some more. They're still, they're still looking down to you there.
Thank you, we'll pass that, have the manager pass along to Mr. Laws, okay. Anyone else at this time? Hearing none. Moving on to item five, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment of item J, correct?
Nine J.
Nine J.
Nine J and new business. North Country Trail, M.O.
M.O.
U.
M.O.U., agreed.
Okay. Is there any other?
There's support. A second.
Okay, is there any other agenda items? Change, okay. All those in favor, say goodbye or saying aye.
Aye.
Saying sign opposed. The agenda, approval of the agenda is done. The consent agenda. Item number six. We have the minutes of the March 12th and accounts payable with transfers. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent.
Mr. Mayor, will we approve, approve the consent agenda and script?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none. See now, this is a monetary alcohol, roll call vote, Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Tru, Mr. Truesdale.
Yes.
Sorry. Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
In the mayor hall, so it's yes, motion carries. Okay, moving on to correspondence. We have two letters, one from Charter Communication and one from the Red Place Newsletter. Any questions concerning that? Hearing none, moving on to item number eight, unfinished business. Motion to approve policies on allowable action items for the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the policies on allowable action item, do we have a specific wording? We, as, as presented in the previous meeting?
There's support. Mr. Perry, support for discussion, okay. Basically currently, we have policy number 12, is what I have here, for standard operating procedures, for a better word. Okay, any discussions?
I'd like to thank Dan and Pam for their hard work on this.
There's more Dan than me.
You're welcome.
And I appreciate it, more than I can even say, because it's complicated and it might be tied further, have, we might have to tweak it, but I appreciate it, I'd like to see it passed.
Just so everyone knows, this is kind of a look and progress policy, so it, you know, we need to live and die by it also. It can be modified, for instance, in the comment, Mr. Clark made reference, our bid opening awarding, that would be one item, we've already discussed it, so that would mean, we move it to the front, so.
And our community just needs to know that if they want us to vote on things, we need to discuss it for a meeting before we vote on it at the next meeting. And if there are things that our community wants us to act on, that's what we'd like them to do. And I think Ronnie Merlington would be really, really happy to know that we are getting this done.
Any other discussion? That's all I called to vote. Hearing none. I would like to do a roll call vote on this. Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Miss Hall votes yes, motion carries. Item number B, discussion on language and how the city council videos are to be handled.
I guess that's our baby, Perry and I.
Well, we haven't had a meeting on it due to schedule conflicts. Okay.
Yeah, we haven't, but I've done some studying on it, I know Linda's updating her electronic. What would you call it, archiving, updating, is that pre-retention? Yeah, record retention, yeah.
Okay.
And I contacted MLB, MML, about what they're doing. And read some of their stuff and there's also some online, on YouTube, there's some other videos about other cities that are YouTubing their city council meetings. So there's a lot of research to be done and we're just, Jerry, yeah, we're going to have a meeting with Deb next week and. Like MML said, the electronic recording and communication is blossoming so fast, it's just hard to keep up with all of it, so. There's a lot of studying to be done on it, but last month's video was excellent, we lost a few seconds, nothing major, but it came out beautiful, I thought, and it was great to go back and look at it and refresh your memory and know what was, what was said and what wasn't said and how to proceed in this month's meeting, so I did appreciate it.
Okay.
And I would just like to use this opportunity to give a big thank you to Mr. Taylor, who put in a lot of work to make that happen. And is really putting us ahead of the curve in our use of technology and I've gotten a lot of very positive comments from, from some of the communities that they think it's pretty messy, that we can check into what we're doing in that way. So, a big thank you to Mr. Taylor for helping to make that happen when we have had technology problems.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I guess, for sake of discussion, do we want to remove this from the agenda for next month and then when we do have policies, procedures added on at that time?
Yeah, well, the, the motion was, was I had.
Right, it's a discussion only.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you think that you might have a recommendation for council by next meeting? By the looks of all the meetings we got coming up, how it happens.
Okay, great. So we'll just, on another agenda, we'll bring this to the forefront, once we get more information in some type of a policy. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Great. Moving on to item C, discussion on retention of a reinstatement, reinstating the finance, the council finance committee, I'll give it up. Ms. Ball?
Yeah, that's another one of my babies. Jerry and I discussed reinstating that and feeling it's, would be nice to know and to, to go over, thinking Deb and. The utilities billing, we'd like to report on that, we report on how much water is sold and water bills that are paid and unpaid or if there's things shut offs out there, we'd like to know about it, so. We don't have to vote on it tonight, but if there's anybody that wants to discuss it, or maybe we could put it on for a motion next month to reinstate that. Finance committee and I don't know if we want to have it videoed or out here or what our steps would be regarding that.
Um, in the past, I was always in the manager's office with the finance director. There's always, you know, and we can call them, per and ask for at any time if there's any questions. Obviously, that would be basically the law of the council, we can.
Some of the reasons that, that the committee was disbanding, who, all the information is presented to the council member after. As, as the council has, a lot of committee groups, Ball asks questions, gives more information on it. They just thought it was needless, because it was truly the responsibility of other councils to make the decisions, not this group, so. But those were, those were some of the reasons that it was disbanded.
And when the new council members here, you know, that's.
It has to be created for some reason, so.
I think when it was listed, this was my heading stat on this committee, that this was before everything was available online and things had, I mean, it was on paper and it was much harder to dig through. I mean, that's my, my experience from.
Well, we could put it to a vote, next meeting we've discussed it on twice, next meeting we could put it to a vote if we feel like we want to restart it and go from there, I guess, if we were to.
I'm rather neutral.
I would be going early tomorrow.
Okay, so we, uh, let's, let's do that, next month, let's make a decision one way or another, up and down. That'll give everybody a little more time to think about it. So next month, be prepared to make a decision one way or the other. I don't know if we need it as a motion, or just as a, I guess, a policy.
Well, I would suggest if you want to reinstate, stay in or just do a council on it.
Yeah, it'll be just a general.
We vote on it, as far as a committee. And committees usually don't need a policy. I mean, you can, I just don't think it says you can't, and certainly, that's part of why you only have three.
Well, be prepared to decide how we want to do it.
There's no form.
Yeah, absolutely, there cannot be a form. Okay, everybody all set with that one? Okay, item D, discussion on waiving the police fees for the 2014 Red Flannel Festival bill.
I think we were getting more data, that was, we were told at the last meeting that there was some clarification.
Well, the, the history of it is that there was a bill sent and that bill was done by Anti-Chief, Chad Potts. And we sent it out and then we, we heard nothing and at one meeting, I can't remember which meeting it was, a representative of the festival showed up, took exception to the bill, council directed staff to look into it. And it was, the timing was excellent, because our retired police chief was back working to help us close down the apartment, we had him take a look at it and. It was just the fact that Anti-Chief Potts had never put the bill together before, anything like that, so they sat down together and it came up with a reduced amount. I believe it was about eight or nine hundred dollars, something in that neighborhood.
Just, just.
Eight sixty-nine ninety-five is what I see.
But just to clarify, you need to go back further, because it starts with an email, if I'm correct.
I know, but I haven't got to that.
Oh, okay.
So anyhow, we sent a revised bill, which was around nine hundred, a hundred dollars or more, less than the original bill. And we, we sent that and we, it was a letter sent from our retired police chief explaining how he had arrived at the number. We heard nothing from the Red Flannel, so after about three weeks or almost a month, Deb issued the refund check. And we heard nothing from the Red Flannel until it was brought to some of the council members. So, I guess, from what I understand, what is at issue was whether or not there were dedicated officers at the Grand Lodge. That seems, as best I can tell, that's the crux of the problem. So I checked with Chief, with Chad Potts, he made the schedule up and he said there were no dedicated officers there. There were officers that as part of their patrol pattern was asked to go be in and out of the beer tent, the Grand Lodge, as appropriate. But they were not assigned there as in years past. In years past, there've been officers, that was their sole responsibility was to be there in that Grand Lodge, it was not the case this year. So they, the, the festival was not billed for dedicated officers, no. That said, there was a line in, in the letter that Chief, Retired Chief Parent put in and I don't know why he put it in there, but it said that Chief Potts was able to arrange his patrol staff and have four uniformed officers assigned to the beer tent each night. It was an incorrect statement, I don't know why, and that's why I asked Chief Potts, or Anti-Chief Potts, and he said, absolutely not, they were not permanently assigned there. So, what I've been able to discover is that no officers were permanently assigned there. They were in and out of there as part of other patrol responsibilities.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Clark. Uh, my question right now, I guess, is did, was there an agreement between the city police and the Red Flannel Festival saying they were going to provide these people, these officers at this time for some kind of guarding services? Or was this a miscommunication somewhere that there was discussion about the police department providing, the police department said, no, we can't, but then they decided they could and they sent that in about actually getting okay for approval from the Red Flannel Festival? That's, I guess, my biggest confusion.
Well, first of all, I guess, the police department doesn't have to have approval from the Red Flannel Festival, they have officers going to the tent.
Well, if they're going to pay for it though, don't they?
As I already said, they weren't charged for those officers. Okay? We had a meeting, like we've done since I've been here, where certain, the appropriate city staff, sit down with the Red Flannel representatives, they tell us what they're planning on doing, we take a look at it so we can determine what our needs were. At that meeting, the discussion was, is that because we, the city was negotiating with the county about taking over the police department, we didn't know what was going to happen, we'd already lost one officer, we thought we were losing another, we said, we just don't, no, we can't commit to it. So we said, we can't. There was a, there was a, um, email from Mr. Laws, it kind of just filed up and summarized, um, what he, what he said with a, his takeaway from that. One of the points was, was there will be no officers designated for the Grand Lodge tent, just the regular roles. There, because no officers are assigned, there will be no charge to the festival for any officer in the Grand Lodge tent. And I responded, we had several other kickwars, and, and I put in there, I said, the sheriff's department may have some reserve officers available during the festival. If that happens, we might be able to free up some of our officers for dedicated duty at the Grand Lodge. If we can provide dedicated officers, do you want them, there will be a cost, heard nothing back, okay? So we didn't assign any.
So.
So, you know, we can, our officers can go in and out of the, the, the Grand Lodge, much like they can go in and out of any business or activity in the community. And we don't charge people for. And we don't charge people for going into the, to the bars and making a liquor check, as an example, or other activities, much like we did here. We didn't charge them for that. It was just a service that was provided as part of the patrol activities of officers.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Truesdale. Yes, I do have a.
Go ahead. I'll go one at a time.
Okay, so I'm looking at the revised bill and I see that there are two lines on here for the beer tent, one for Friday, one for Saturday. Each day was charged twenty-four hours for part-time officers, so I see that that was not necessarily dedicated. But I feel like the crux of this issue for me is that the Red Flannel Festival based a decision, and that is to provide their own security at the beer tent, on the city saying, well, we may not be able to do this for you. And I understand with, so at the time, it was a big transition. But if I were to go to my mechanic and say, please change my tires, and I came to pick up my car and he said, oh, by the way, while I was in there, I saw your tie rod was bad, so I fixed that. If I didn't have the cash to pay my mechanic just then, I would be very upset that he did that. I feel like unless there is some documented agreement from the Red Flannel Festival saying, yes, if you have these extra officers, please have them come through, then I don't understand why we're charging them.
We're not charging them for any officers that went in the Grand Lodge. We're not.
It's on the revised bill, though. I'm very confused.
I know it's confusing for a number of reasons. Number one, this is an invoice that, it's almost like a template that Rogers used for many years. Chad took that same template. Chad was not experienced in doing the invoice. That created the initial problem. We had Roger come in, go through it, talk to Chad, and Roger went back to his same template.
Okay.
So it was just, it was confusing. And, but all I can go back to is, in talking to Acting Chief Potts, there was no one assigned there. No one permanently assigned. You know, I, I guess, if there was that much confusion, I wish somebody from the Red Flannel would have come and said, we're confused, can we work this out? You know, when they got the bill, because Roger was still around at that time and so was Chad, and we could have hashed this all out. But, you know, I, I fully believe Chad, there was no dedicated officers there. We did take off over nine hundred dollars off the bill, revised it to reflect what services we did for Ron.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, I just, I just come back to the point that there's six hundred dollars in charges that are attributed to the beer tent. And so either those need to be for something else, or they need to be reversed. I just don't know what else to do with that.
They would have been for other activities associated with the Red Flannel in terms of what was going on in the entire city and the additional people and responsibilities. So, you know, all I know is there were none assigned to the Grand Lodge. They were in and out of there as part of the patrol responsibilities. If, if you would like, I can have Chad Potts and Roger Brown come at the next meeting and tell you that.
I'm just not sure how they're going to remember something from October at this point, if all we, this is, this is the only documentation.
All, well, it's not, it's not, the Red Flannel Festival's a huge event for this community, it's a huge event for our police department. And those types of events, you remember quite vividly what you were doing. You probably could go back through the records and find the assignments and the schedule.
Mr. Truesdale. Mr. Mayor, I am very weary when I recall the fact that for years and years and years, now correct me if I'm wrong, that the city picked up basically the bill for the Red Flannel within, within reason. And it's only been the last three or four years since everything gets the fan that we've been going around and around and around and debating nine hundred dollars, eight hundred dollars, that's it. It's a bunch of nonsense. I mean, that's penis. In, in relation to what it does for us as local businessmen. It was, I think it was last year that we did twenty, twenty thousand, I think, on Red Flannel Day. Unbelievable. And why isn't it worth it? And why are we arguing about such a minute amount? It was, all goes back to the Christine Byrne days when she said, Michelle, we have no money. But we have proven since that many a time, folks, that we have money for everything else, but we don't have money to go alongside the Red Flannel people and make this thing happen and go on down the road and forget our differences and show a little love to one another.
No, sir. I didn't know it. Thank you. Mr. Hopkins. I'm going to poll each council member.
Well, I, I don't know the full basis on it. What's the previous year and what are the last three years, how's it been handled as far as the policing being paid? Has the city been picking that up still, or is it?
No, I believe the festival has paid a, an amount agreed each year.
On average, for the last four years, it's been over three one hundred dollars, on average.
So they're paying less now because they didn't have the Grand Lodge fee, right?
Obviously, we're down to, I think the number is six hundred and some dollars.
Sixteen hundred dollars.
Sixteen, okay, sixteen. Okay, Ms. Clark, if you'd speak to this, I'll poll each one to get everyone's opinion and then we're going to vote.
May I ask a question still? Yes. I guess I'm still confused about the six hundred dollars that was designated to the beer tent and now we're saying that it was just general, you know, was people checking, taking care of things around the tent and in the streets. It was, is that by agreement with the Red Flannel Festival every year, that policing effort?
That's what, the needs are determined by the chief.
And that charge then is agreed to with the Red Flannel Festival beforehand so that they knew that they were going to get charged with the six hundred dollars.
We didn't itemize it.
But they, but in general, they knew that there would be policing made available that they would have to pay for.
Right.
Okay.
Me?
Do you have, is that Ms. Clark?
Hi.
Okay, Mrs. Powell.
I've just looked over statements for over the years and it's just very poor bookkeeping and invoicing system.
Well, we don't want to criticize. We're here to make the decision and the discussion.
And I see the three hundred, six hundred bucks there, which is attributed to the beer tent and, like you said, it's for the general vicinity and keeping the peace. And that's what the festival wants, but it should have been an agreement that they weren't dedicated to the Grand Lodge, that they were general patrol before they were billed for it.
Please, make a quick comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, remain.
We didn't commit to dedicated officers at the Grand Lodge. It was said in the meeting, when Mr. Law sent the email going over the points, and to remember them, it was very specific that we weren't going to provide them. I responded that there may be an option for us to do it. Do you want it? Heard nothing. Hearing nothing, we didn't provide.
For Grand Lodge. For the Grand Lodge.
Right.
Am I up?
Yeah, Mrs. Conley.
For me, this comes down really simply to, in the past, when a contract started with the festival and the city, the specific things that the festival was going to pay for regarding the city, and this includes policing, this includes hanging the flannel, all the range of city services, were specifically outlined. If you're going to pay for it, we tell you what it is so that you can figure out what the cost was. There was even a to not exceed number. And this year, when they said, we need to get together to do this, we got this email from previous Chief Parents saying, we can't provide these services for you.
Police.
Police. So to me, that says, we don't charge them for policing. That's the way I read that. Now, if they did general patrolling, great, they should do general patrolling. We don't charge them for that. They're doing general patrolling right now and we don't send a bill. We don't send a bill to the school when we have graduation, we don't send a bill to the chamber when they have their run fair, we don't sign a bill to the chamber when we have the Zingle with Chris Kringle or the other wonderful things they do, and we shouldn't. That's what our police, and we don't send a bill when there's a break-in at Skinner Field and our police department responds. So if we had a contract with the festival where we said, this is what we're going, we want extra beyond what our policing is expected, then they should pay for it. But the point at which the city said, we can't provide those services, there shouldn't be a bill. If I said, I would like to hire a DJ for wedding, and the DJ said, I'm booked. Yeah, I'm booked. I can't do your wedding. So they hire someone else. If the DJ then shows up and says, please pay me, that's a problem.
Okay.
So that's my position.
Okay, Ms. Conley, thank you. Anyone else before we go?
I want to correct a misstatement. In the email that was traded between Mark and I, it was, there were no, there will be no officers designated for the Grand Lodge tent, just the regular patrols. So we.
Okay.
And so the police department did not designate people for the Grand Lodge.
Okay, it's been clarified, and I think all of us come to the agreement, that this funding expenditure that was billed the festival was not for the Grand Lodge, it was for general policing on the street, correct?
Correct.
Everybody? Go ahead.
Is that general policing charged every year as a discussion?
Um, I believe it's been every year for the last three to four when they paid. That would be, would be agreed amount. They, basically, the contract or whatever the festival was that the police would provide X amount for whatever assigned duty. So this one happened to be, there was no, for the beer tent, the way I see it and the way the miss billing, it was tagged as the beer tent, or it should have been tagged as general policing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. We've, yeah, we've had this discussion on this for the last, I think, three months since I've been here. Basically, what is the will of the council? We need to move on this, or where are we going to move?
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the police fees for the 2014 Red Flannel Festival.
Second. Okay, for this question and everything, which then moved in second to dismiss the bill for the 2014 Red Flannel Festival bill and for policing.
I have a.
For the whole community, correct? That's the way I hear the motions.
May I ask a question?
No. The makers of the motions?
Yes.
And the supporter? Are we talking six hundred dollars?
Sixteen hundred.
The supporter? Who supported that?
I did. Just by asking how much we're talking about.
Well, that's what the maker of the motion. In what dollar amount?
What is the, what is the amount that is?
One thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-three cents, if I see it right.
It's the total, though. It's the total, though.
Four thousand? One thousand. Oh, one thousand. Six hundred and sixty-one eighty-three, is that correct, Mr. Men?
Okay, I'll include that. One thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-three cents.
Supporter, that makes.
Let's move on.
Is this, I'll still support that. Okay. This pertains to money. Any discussion?
I, I feel it would be more appropriate to waive only the beer tent fees.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
I don't mean I'm supporting that. I mean, I agree with that.
We have a motion on the floor at this time to waive the one thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. This pertains to financials. I will call a roll call vote. Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon.
No.
Mr. Hopkins.
No.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Motion carries. Yes, I'm sorry. The motion carries. Moving on. Discussion on the city's computer system. Mr. Violet, or Mr. Manager.
Because at the council's request in the last meeting, they had some, apparently some questions they wanted to ask the owner of our, well, I guess, information technology firm about, as I recall, basically, the wireless hubs and our routers. So the web is here, the owner's Iletex, and as you could ask your questions.
I would like to request the council, one person at a time, we'll poll the council, and we can cover it that way, just for expedience. Mr. Hopkins, would you care to?
Discussion on the computer system?
Yes. If you have a question, if you have a question, then this is a.
No, computers are open.
Well, it's also the emails and all the IT.
I pretty much got the emails figured out.
You have any questions?
No, I'm a computer illiterate, I couldn't say anything. Add or subtract. Thank you.
Mrs. Nixon.
I don't, I don't want to sound rude, but I think this is going to come out a little, so please give me some leeway. What is it precisely that you do for the city? I mean, I know it's a lot of behind the scenes, so what is it, what is in your scope of work that you do for us?
What do you perform?
Basically, I maintain the computer system for the city. Their file servers, their network equipment, connections to the county for the police department. Basically, anything related to the computer system here.
Okay, so do you, do you also handle updating our website?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. And then I know that you, I think I must have spoken to you because I had email issues, whether it was the email or me, who knows, but it's one of them. So do you, do you maintain that server then, or do you just troubleshoot for us?
Yeah, the emails are on the same server as the city's network, so, yeah, it's part of it.
Do you, Madam? Mr. Clark.
Well, first of all, I'm curious about the new system. Now, it fit, in my very small understanding of what we needed for the camera and for the operation of the office, I felt like that it was oversized. But I may not understand why it needed to have that much bandwidth to just operate the camera, which, as I understand, only requires a half, a megabit per second upload speed to operate.
speed to operate, which is, you know, pretty minimal. And these are capable of, these access points?
Well, they're dual-band, so they do both 5 gigahertz and 2.4 gigahertz, but...
As far as the bandwidth, what can they handle?
I think it's 350 megabits or something like that.
And what is our office, and with the camera operating, what do we need really? How much bandwidth do we use?
It's really not a bandwidth issue. What originally started this whole thing with the wireless was, the city had some very inexpensive routers in place, and they're experiencing drops and disconnections on the wireless. So I was asked to consult with them regarding getting a stable secure, or stable wireless system for the cameras and for the city's infrastructure. And I went with these not because of the bandwidth, but because of the quality of the radios. When you go with, you know, the cheaper, lower-end routers like you would have at your house, the radios in those, you're basically talking about an RF radio, much like the police and fire use to talk on. It's the same kind of technology. And when you're running it wireless, it's on 24/7, transmitting and receiving. And the duty cycle of that for, like your typical household routers, is not going to be as high a quality as what you're looking at for these. These are more of an enterprise-level type of device. So it wasn't really the bandwidth that we went on based on when we...
No, we had two, right?
That is correct.
And we needed two because?
The reason we went with two is because having this style of router versus the other style...
Excuse me. Now, this a router or an access?
Access point, sorry. Having the two different wireless access devices would conflict, and they wouldn't have some transitions on their network, and they can actually interfere with each other. So these are both the same, same identical system, and they're designed to operate together.
They support each other.
Exactly.
Did we, did we do anything out here in the switches or anything? Do we have to make any changes out there?
As part of the wireless?
Yes.
No.
No, that's what I'm saying.
These are added to the network.
I noticed that that switch out there is pretty full. Are we gonna have to update that pretty soon?
I judge that basically based on whether we need more connections or not. I mean, if they ask me to add another connection, we may have to add.
Have to go another switch. Okay. So the upload bandwidth that we have isn't really the significance. We just needed the extra quality of the radio signal to ensure that we have a continuous signal.
Yeah, like the transmitter and receiver that's in the device, so that you don't have the drops and disconnections like you would with a lower-quality router.
Are we a hotspot here at City Hall?
Um...
For people on the street?
No.
We're not?
No, this is a secured...
Yeah, secured.
Yes.
Is it possible we could become a hotspot and protect all of our information and still serve the community that way?
As far as providing, like, a public Wi-Fi access point?
Yes.
I suppose that's possible. I mean, anything's possible.
Do you have enough money?
Sure. I mean, these wireless access points have the capability of providing a guest network. It would require some changes on the switch, like we talked about, in order to separate the two networks.
Okay.
So that way, people out on the street aren't able to access anything on the city. They would only be allowed to have internet access through that device.
I know that there's been some interest spoken from some of the council members about making more Wi-Fi available in town. I just didn't know how hard it would be for this place to become one and still protect the information. So it would be possible?
Sure, it would be possible. I guess it depends on how far-reaching you want this to be from City Hall. I mean, we also do the support work for the city of Rockford, and they have a system that, well, they're replacing it right now, but they have a system that's basically a public Wi-Fi hotspot throughout the city, and they have various access points throughout the city.
I checked with Rockford today to see, you know, I'm moving now to our website for our emails. Now, the lady I talked to said they do not have that for their council people. Is that accurate, as far as you know?
The public Wi-Fi?
No, this is Rockford City Hall. Do you also provide service for the City Hall?
Yes, they have, they have an internal Wi-Fi, just like the city here does, and they're able to access it internally.
But as far as email communications between the council people, they don't have a website like we have?
They have a website. The council emails, I believe, the council members are encouraged to keep a completely separate email from their personal email.
Uh-huh.
And it's, it's not hosted by the city, it's a separate, like, they sign up for Gmail or something.
But it's dedicated to that one purpose.
Exactly. They don't use it for personal use or anything.
Thank you so much.
You said you provide services for Rockford, is there any other community somewhere for you?
We worked with the city of Grant briefly. They haven't had any issues lately, but typically, they call us if there's any issues. We handle the North Kent Sewer Authority, we handle the Clean Water Plan out here.
I guess there were some questions about our servers, our router?
Well, that we've updated.
Updated that, okay. I guess that's it.
Ms. Conley?
I have a couple questions, and this may or may not be in your purview. Is, do you, do you basically wait until there's a problem and then we come to you? Or is it your job to see what it is that is or isn't working and maintain it?
For the state?
For the most part, it's, it's basically, we're called if there's an issue. It's pretty much self-maintained.
So is it true that we're still running Windows XP?
It's possible on these, I'm not sure.
Can that be secured?
It is secured behind the firewall. I mean, it...
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because isn't it hard, like, can you even get patches for that anymore?
No, Microsoft has discontinued the support for upgrades, security and support upgrades, but if it's behind the firewall, it's not reaching the internet.
Okay, is that gonna impact our memory? Like, our ability, we keep having stuff cut out. So if it's not a router issue anymore, is it a memory issue?
I haven't heard of any issues, I guess.
I don't think we've gained any problems since we've got the new access points.
In the last couple of years.
We've had, no reported problems from council or planning committees who use these.
Mine hasn't dropped, though, it's been working.
That was one of the reasons we went with a new one.
I knew that the router was part of it, but then there seemed to be, it didn't seem to fix at all.
If that's the case, I haven't heard.
Okay.
No. It wasn't brought to my attention.
You don't think we need to upgrade to, like, at least Windows 7?
Sure, that would be a good idea. Yeah, I mean, I haven't, I haven't actually talked to anybody about that.
Okay. I guess that was my question, is, is it your job to come tell us you're kind of back behind the, you need to do this to maintain what you need, or do you wait until we have a problem and then we come to you and say how to keep it?
By default, we wait until there's an issue. We do provide services.
I understand you provide, it's not part of your job description to come say to us, like, "Look, you are not where you ought to be, and you should do this."
That's a monthly service that we provide. It's, you know, we charge that.
But we aren't currently paying for it.
Exactly.
Just to clean on that, you know, they'll do monthly checks of our system, manage the servers, and also make sure that all of our necessary licenses are current.
Sure.
And then update when we need. So in that, in those regards, they manage the system and watch out for us. But if you're talking about when we have computer problems, are they going into our computers and trying to forecast the problems we have? No, no, they don't. We have to report that to them.
Okay.
And then they would offer solutions.
I think that's still not quite what I'm asking, but, like, what I'm saying is the idea of, like...
You're talking proactive.
Yes. Yes. And I understand if we're not paying for that service, that's not your fault, that you're not giving us something we're not paying for. I could, I'm trying to understand the scope of what it is we're paying for and what is the expectation, because it does seem like we're putting on a lot of fighters. And it would be nice if we could be in front of it and have our technology work...